Hello, sweetie pie. You can have a seat.
There were three hours.
Right.
And now.
Yeah, no, I think that's actually nice. I've been actually mad at this. It's like, oh, it's something.
I swear he was the most brilliant. He was like, I used to say that to him. He was like, the executioner. He used to, he, he used to, he was, when he was up.
Mike, you call those meetings, go ahead.
Yes, Carter. The notice requirements of the Urban Publics Meetings Act of the state of New Jersey have been satisfied by the inclusion of the date, time, and place of this meeting, and the notice posted in the first floor main lobby of the Pittkin Education Center of Bergen Community College was mailed to the record in the Ridgewood News and was filed with the clerk of the county in Bergen.
Thank you. Will you please join me? I'm sorry, give me a question. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Chairman Karsten.
Yes, here.
Dorothy Blakesley.
Here.
Phil Ciarko.
Here.
James Demetracus.
Here.
Joanne Mecca.
Here.
Jermaine Ortiz.
Here.
Anthony Miller.
Here.
James Napolitano.
Here.
Michael Neglia.
Here.
Irene Nojo.
Here.
Nora Peck.
Here.
Lorraine Durin.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, to congratulate everyone. We have a full board on our hands. At this time, reports, vice chairman.
Yes, thank you, Carter. A couple of things. I had the pleasure of being here a couple of times last week, and for the first time, I got to see, along with trustee Mecca and trustee Napolitano, the activity level within the lobby about the clubs and recruiting to join clubs. And I gotta tell you, that gets hot and hectic out there, but it was really, really nice to see, and I wish all the organizations good recruitment, and I hope you have a wonderful year. On a second note, last Friday, I got to visit the YMCA down in the Meadowlands, where they are embarking on their building project, and met with Jane Egan and Joe Minn. And during the course of our conversation, it came to light that there are a tremendous number of synergies that will probably, or could probably, work out well with a relationship with BCC as this project develops. And just today, I know Kay has made time in her schedule to meet with Jane and Linda Amor from the Meadowlands, and it should be, it should be a relationship that could prosper going forward. Thank you, Carter.
Mr. Secretary.
Yes, the approval of the minutes, December 1st, January 7th, and the approval of the consent agenda today.
Our treasurer.
The Audit Committee met last week, and we will be recommending that board approve AF1 through AF18.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Karsten. Today's a very special day at the college, as is every day, but we initiated our celebration for Black History Month today with a very intense and informative discussion from Dr. Brown regarding hollowed ground here in Bergen County for African-Americans. And he walked us through the history of a lot of our cemeteries here, and really the historical significance of the folks who are buried there, and the historical significance for Bergen County, the state of New Jersey, and our country. So it was a very good opening celebration, and I hope that all of you will take a look on our website. We have a whole calendar of events planned for this month for our celebration, and join us for as many of them as you can. I'd like to now invite Dr. Gonzalez de Jesus to come forward and introduce her staff members, who will be presenting their assessment work today. As you know, Middle States not only expects our faculty to be doing assessment, but all of us to be doing assessment. So, Dr. Gonzalez de Jesus.
Dr. Walter, thank you. Chairman Karsten, members of the board, thank you for this time. As we present to you today the assessment work that we've been doing throughout the past year or so within the Office of Financial Aid. Without further ado, the executive director of Financial Aid, Dr. Sharon Alden. Sharon, please come to the front. Thank you. Thank you again.
Hello. Welcome. Thank you for having me. Thank you, Dr. Walter, Board of Trustees, and that great introduction, Dr. Gonzalez de Jesus. What I'd like to do is first, two things I'd like to bring to mind, and those are, I think we can all agree that there are two things that we strive to do here at the college in a particular financial aid. One is, or currently doing, is achieve the dream. And how do we do that with our students when there is the financial barriers? Students face significant financial barriers, as you can see. How do we get those students so that they can afford to go to school? How do we get those students to graduation? What can we do from a financial aid perspective that will reduce those and knock those barriers down, and increase our intention and our persistence to graduation? One thing that we can do is look at our awarding practices. But in order to do that, let's move, let's take a historical look at where we were before the 14, 15-year. Students before 2013, they were awarded grants only. What I mean by that is that loans were not part of their award package. Students had to come and ask for loans. So what did that mean for retention? What did that mean for students being able to take whatever number of credits they wanted to take? We don't know. I, you know, that was before my time. But what I am a firm believer in is packaging students up to their full entitlement. So students had to come in, and if they didn't have enough grant money, we don't know what happened with that. What happened as far as the college after 2013 is there was a few leadership changes. One was Dr. Nadine Gonzalez de Jesus. She came in January of 2013. I followed in August of 2013. What that did for us is that I opened discussions on how we can change things for students, how we can reduce that financial barrier for students. So what we would do, we opened our discussion to where students would be awarded the loans as well. What that did is that increased the amount of money available to students to cover their cost of attendance. That meant room and board, that meant transportation. A lot of things, students have challenges for when they go, when they go to school. You know, bus fare, you know, room and board, food. These were all things that there may not have been accomplished for students if they didn't know what their loans were, what they weren't available for. So what we did is, it was just a discussion. We weighed out our default rate, we talked about our default rate. Our default rate, which is 8.9, is less than the national average. The national average is 11.9, so we're below that. And of course, my goal is to get it even further down. I'd like to see it around 1%. I think that's reasonable. I don't know. But, you know, what we can do is we can definitely try that, and that could be our target goal. So what happened in, it was April, mid-April of 2014, this was only six months after I arrived here, the Department of Education came in, and they did a program review. Now, all this time, we had just had discussions on increasing our packaging, or changing our awarding strategy. Department of Education came in and doing the program review, they said, "You're not doing enough to make students aware of their loans." So that was, yay, you know, what I believed in. That's what we all, all the last six months, we had been talking about changing our strategy. So they just reinforced that for us. So what did we do? We changed our strategy. We started rewarding students with their loans, keeping in mind the default rate. Then the assessment for Middle States. We wanted to know how that impacted our students. So a year later, and we were very busy in a year's time, we, in June of 2015, we decided to do our assessment on the changes to our packaging strategy, from no loans packaged to all students packaged. Students were able to get informed, make informed decisions, and possibly change their, the number of credits that they registered for. So it was a key change in our practice. So what we did is we did our assessment. The results are as follows. We did a two-year change in the packaging strategy from 13, 2013 to 2014, the difference between the two. As you can see in the gray shaded area, it directly correlates with the 2013. More students taking Pell, take out less loans. And then there's a direct correlation between students in 2014, where they have lesser Pell eligibility, number of students with Pell eligible, but a direct correlation between the loans. Now, what have, what would have happened if we hadn't packaged students upfront for their loans? Would that have been different? It may have been. Students may have decided that I don't, I can't afford to go to school. So that's the way I look at that data. The key here is that there's a lot of other things that we can look at as far as the initial assessment. We can, you know, we can basically take it to the limit of, okay, why do these students? We can target students. We could do a lot of other things to reduce those financial barriers for our students, and that is the main goal for financial aid, as far as, you know, my overall philosophy on financial aid. Now, as far as initiatives, we talked about our default rate, and yes, it's, it's concern for all higher institutions of higher education, and it's a concern for students. They go out with a large student loan debt, and can they pay it? We, we understand that, but we want them to get through school. We want them to make informed decisions about their education. We want them to be able to afford it. So what we've done is we created the Center for Financial Literacy. That is our main initiative at the present time. We've got a lot of other initiatives that we're doing, but this is the main one, which will channel all of the financial aid through. And what I mean by that is that we're going to have already existing staff members certified as personal financial managers or planners. And what these staff members will be is they will be able to counsel students on their budgets, on their payment plans with their loans, on the options that they have, and overall, general financial management. Secondly, is we'll have peer mentors, and we'll be working very closely with student life as far as establishing peer mentors or one-on-one relationship with stu, other students. Other students that might have gone through this program, so that they are, there's more of a one-on-one relationship student to student. Second thing is mandatory financial management of incoming freshmen or first-time borrowers. And what I mean by that is that in order for them to have, get their loans, they would then have to go through a budget plan, financial management, so that they're better informed on whether to accept or reject their loans. They don't have to take their loans out, but what we want to do is give them a more informed option so that they can move forward at whether they need to take out the loans or not. The other one is voluntary counseling of continuing students. They already got, they already have their loans. What we, our target is, is that to educate them on the repayment plans and how they can afford their student loans. And that, again, will tie into our default management. Also, implementation of the default prevention plan through the center. And then we'll do some pre and post-assessment on effectiveness, effectiveness of the center. So we've done a lot of other things along the way, not just as far as the financial barriers. There's a lot of other things that we've done to reduce the barriers. Students, you know, we've listened to our students. One thing that we've done is we've, the scanning. Students are the ones that do the scanning themselves, and that is, was a major, major win for us. What happened is that we, as you can see from the little picture, so we were up to our eyes with paperwork. And what happened is that now students have to scan their own documents. It cleans off our desks, it makes things more efficient, it aids the students in reducing the amount of documents that might, might have been missing, or lost, or not submitted so, and through the mail. So it was a major thing for students to do, and it is working fantastic. We're able to counsel students more one-on-one, so we don't have to deal with the paperwork. We have scanners that goes directly into the student's record, so it's, it's streamlining a lot of our processes. Also, the other thing was, is that our communication with students. One thing that we listened to is, "I didn't know, I didn't know, I didn't know." But what we decided to do is enhance what we already do. And what I mean by that is that from the start of us getting their student aid report to the day they scan, to the day we get the document, market received, all the way until the end of their awarding, we communicate that to them. Yes, it's by email, but we are communicating, and we're seeing fewer and fewer complaints from students about, "I don't know what my process, where are they with the process?" So it's reduced a lot of the complaints, a lot of the anxiety, and that's a win for the students because they can, they can focus more on their studies, and then get their education and graduate. Now, the other thing is dynamic forms. It used to be paper. Students would have to print up the document, and then they would have to submit it through scanning or to the financial aid office. What the dynamic forms does is it electronically, they type all of their information, and they submit it electronically, and as you can see, that we don't see documents until we verify the files, and it's a win-win for both sides. It automatically goes in their no loss papers, or it goes directly, it's turnaround time for verifying files is cut in, I would say, in three-fourths of the time. Finally, but not least, is that community outreach. We are working with HISA, Higher Education Assistance Authority, the state of New Jersey, and they will be coming on campus five times over the course of the spring semester, and they will be giving FACA days. We have three that are doing Saturdays. My, I've been told by our counselor from, that does LowDye, and that gives FACA presentation to LowDye, that they want to bring buses in. So we're going to anticipate that, and we're going to be able to, you know, have not just students that would come to our school, but as a community service to help them complete the FACA correctly and on time. So that's a big win for us also. It's the first time, I believe, that we've done that at Bergen, so that's a, it's a good thing that we're doing. And, and that's it. I mean, we have a lot of other things that we're doing, but it would take up too much of the time, but I want to thank you all for listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? Karen?
Yes.
What's the percentage of our students that basically need financial aid?
I would say good, maybe 80% of our students. It's a, it's a large majority of our students that need some kind of financial aid, whether it's grants, but there's also the self-help, so you can, you have to include them all.
So basically, what you're saying is that your activities there touch the lives of about at least 80% of our students.
Absolutely. And my goal is to minimize those barriers and be able to bring that counseling back into the college, and that's sorely missed. You know, the students one-on-one with the counselors.
Sure.
And it helps the students tremendously. So it's the goal.
Well, I know that just, Carter, you know, four, five, six years ago, this department was one of the Achilles' heels as far as the number of complaints and problems in the department, and I just want to commend you, Sharon, and Nadine.
Yes.
For what a dramatic turnaround.
Thank you.
Has taken place in just the last three years.
Yeah.
And on behalf of the board, I want to thank you for your efforts.
My, thank you. I, I, just one thing before I leave, I know I don't want to get on my soapbox, but I really believe that it's, you know, the vision of Dr. Walter, in the sense that she has allowed us the freedom to imagine and vision and create a vision, and Dr. Gonzalez de Jesus has facilitated that, and I think that this skies the world for, as far as my imagination, and what we can do for our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. That was very, very interesting, but important, and what Phil said is correct. There's a 100% turnaround in that department. All right, we'll go to committees. Audit and Finance.
Audit and Finance, President. The board approved AF1 through AF18.
Board of School Estimant, I guess, pretty soon, maybe having a meeting.
Hopefully. We're waiting on them to give us a date.
Okay. Education and Student Affairs.
We're recommending approval of ESA 1 through 6.
Personnel.
Recognizing P1 through P12.
Foundation Grants and Endowment.
Thank you, Carter. The foundation, Lindsey Mauer, our new executive director, has been very, very busy, looking at all aspects of the foundation, the organization of the foundation, the makeup of the foundation board. We've done some bylaw revisions that'll probably take effect within the next few months, but most importantly, we're preparing for this year's signature event on March 30th at the Venetian. Our casino night is going to be mitted as Club Monte Carlo. We'll be bringing folks back to a time of the 1940s with the feeling of a Casablanca effect to it by presenting an evening at a supper club with gaming. There will be a Fred and Ginger floor show, and a lot of high spirits. It's going to be an outstanding event, and it is, so this is our major fundraiser of the year. We did not pull the medallion dinner last year, looking to change things up a little bit. So this, this is it. So I behoove all of my colleagues on the board and the college community and everyone to please support this event, not only because it is our major fundraiser, because I'll tell you what, we're going to have a heck of a good time there. It's going to be a great night again, March 30th at the Venetian. Thank you, Carter.
Thank you, Phil. Site and Facilities.
Site and Facilities met and offers SF1 through SF5.
Strategic Planning.
Okay. It's February 2nd. This is it. Back in beginning of 2013, I think we talked about the creation of the Steering Committee for the Middle States Evaluation. We are now 22 days, or 27 days away from the Steering Committee having dinner with Dr. Ender and the team being on campus with us until through March 2nd to do their evaluation. These presentations that you've been listening to each month on what each department is doing on assessment gives you an idea of what kind of emphasis that Middle States and the Steering Committee team puts on the assessment part of the program. 102 pages long. I'm not asking you to read all the pages because you've been listening. You're listening to Sharon today. You've got a good idea of what they've been doing in that respective area regarding assessment. But read the first four pages, and then go to each of the 14 standards. Go to the back of those standards and look at findings, suggestions, recommendations. It'll give you a good idea. Again, I've been privileged, this is my third Middle States Steering Committee team during my tenure here as a trustee. It's as fine a document as I've, I've ever seen, and I want to commend Dr. Kim and Gail and Sony, and quite frankly, literally, the hundreds of staff and faculty members that have given their time and effort to the creation of this document. I expect it to be extremely well-received, and we really look forward to the team and Dr. Ender visiting us the end of the month. Thank you, Carter.
Thank you, Phil, and it was very interesting to read, it really was. And I hope all the members of the board had an opportunity to, to read it. At this time, our layers on to New Jersey Council.
Chairman, the council didn't meet this past month, but we will be meeting next month, and naturally, we'll keep you advised. There is some concern with regard to federal legislation. As you know, it's the president's final year in office. He's meeting today with the Speaker of the House of Representatives to try to come to some understanding as to what pieces of legislation they'll be able to mutually support. So we'll look forward to hearing within the next several days what that agenda will be and how it will impact our community colleges.
Thank you.
Carter, did you miss personnel?
Pardon?
Did you miss personnel? Are you presented this?
Alumni trustee, Lauren.
Good evening, Chairman, Dr. Walter, and members of the board, and also the audience. So what I'd like to talk about is, we've been calling it the pay-to-print, but thanks to Larry, we want to move away from that, and we want to call it the new printing procedure. Because if students use it wisely, most students will never have to pay to print. So that's really what we want to get across to students. Larry was great. He put up all the flyers, and he's getting out the word to students that they have to be conscientious of how much they print. So we just want to make it clear to students that as long as you use your printing wisely, not only will you be saving trees, helping the college, but you also won't have to pay to print. Thank you.
All right. Well, I would like to make a statement. We got some pretty good publicity the other day in regard to our drone program, and I would like to congratulate, everyone had a part in that. And again, I say, every time I turned on the television station, Bergen Community College was there. And just for the general public, I'd emphasize that we are one of only three community colleges in the entire country to have this program, and we're the only one certified in the year. Is that right? And I thank everyone. At this time, is there any unfinished business? If not, I will open the meeting to the public. Anyone from the public wish to be heard?
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Richard Berbridge, and I'm here to share a view of a proposal that will have an impact on the students, faculty, and administration, and the community beyond BCC. The name of that proposal is the Trans-Pacific Partnership Agreement, or TPP, or the trade deal. Is there anyone here familiar with its details?
I'm not.
The trade deal is an economic integration proposal that has been agreed upon by 12 Pacific nations, including the United States, Vietnam, Peru, and Malaysia. Next Monday or Tuesday, activists expect Congress to vote on the TPP. The nonprofit organizations OpenMedia.org, Creative Commons, and the Electronic Frontier Foundation, the EFF.
So that's the way I look at that data. The key here is that there's a lot of other things that we can look at as far as the initial assessment. We can, you know, we can basically take it to the limit of, okay, why did these students, we can target students. We could do a lot of other things to reduce those financial barriers for our students. And that is the main goal for financial aid, as far as, you know, my overall philosophy on financial aid. Now, as far as initiatives, we talked about a default rate. And yes, it's a concern for all higher institutions of higher education. And it's a big concern for students. They go out with a large student loan debt. And can they pay it? We understand that. But we want them to get through school. We want them to make informed decisions about their education. We want them to be able to afford it. So what we've done is we created the Center for Financial Literacy. That is our main initiative at the present time. We've got a lot of other initiatives that we're doing, but this is the main one which will channel all of the financial aid through. And what I mean by that is that we're going to have already existing staff members certified as personal financial managers or planners. And what these staff members will be is they will be able to counsel students on their budgets, on their payment plans with their loans, on the options that they have, and overall, general financial management. Secondly, is we'll have peer mentors. And we'll be working very closely with student life as far as establishing peer mentors or one-on-one relationship with other students. Other students that might have gone through this program, so that they are, there's more of a one-on-one relationship student to student. Second thing is mandatory financial management of incoming freshmen or first-time borrowers. And what I mean by that is that in order for them to have their, get their loans, they would then have to go through a budget plan, financial management, so that they're better informed on whether to accept or reject their loans. They don't have to take their loans out, but what we want to do is give them a more informed option so that they can move forward at whether they need to take out the loans or not. The other one is voluntary counseling of continuing students. They've already got, they already have their loans. What we, our target is, is that to educate them on their repayment plans and how they can afford their student loans. And that again, will tie into our default management. Also, implementation of the default prevention plan through the center. And then we'll do some pre and post-assessment on effectiveness of the center. So we've done a lot of other things along the way, not just as far as the financial barriers. There's a lot of other things that we've done to reduce the barriers. Students, you know, we've listened to our students. One thing that we've done is we've, the scanning. Students are the ones that do the scanning themselves. And that is, was a major, major win for us. What happened is that we, as you can see from the little picture, is that we were up to our eyes with paperwork. And what happened is that now students have to scan their own documents. It cleans off our desks. It makes things more efficient. It aids the students in reducing the amount of documents that might have been missing or lost or not submitted, so, and through the mail. So it was a major thing for students to do, and it is working fantastic. We're able to counsel students more one-on-one, so we don't have to deal with the paperwork. We have scanners that goes directly into the student's record, so it's streamlining a lot of our processes. Also, the other thing was, is that our communication with students. One thing that we listen to is, I didn't know, I didn't know, I didn't know. But what we decided to do is enhance what we already do. And what I mean by that is that from the start of us getting their student aid report to the day they scan, to the day we get the document, market receipt, all the way until the end of their awarding, we communicate that to them. Yes, it's by email, but we are communicating, and we're seeing fewer and fewer complaints from students about, I don't know what my process, where are they with the process? So it's reduced a lot of the complaints, a lot of the anxiety, and that's a win for the students because they can, they can focus more on their studies and then get their education and graduate. Now, the other thing is dynamic forms. It used to be paper. Students would have to print up the document, and then they would have to submit it through scanning or to the financial aid office. What the dynamic forms does is electronically, they type all of their information, and they submit it electronically. And as you can see, that we don't see documents until we verify the files, and it's a win-win for both sides. It automatically goes in their no-loss papers, or it goes directly, its turnaround time for verifying files is cut in, I would say, in three-fourths of the time. Finally, but not least, is that community outreach. We are working with HISA, Higher Education Assistance Authority, the state of New Jersey, and they will be coming on campus five times over the course of the spring semester, and they will be giving FACSA days. We have three that are during Saturdays. My, I've been told by our counselor from, that does Lodi and that gives FACSA presentation to Lodi, that they want to bring buses in. So we're going to anticipate that, and we're going to be able to, you know, have not just students that would come to our school, but as a community service to help them complete the FACSA correctly and on time. So that's a big win for us also. It's the first time, I believe, that we've done that at Bergen. So that's a, it's a good thing that we're doing. And, and that's it. I mean, we have a lot of other things that we're doing, but it would take up too much of the time. But I want to thank you all for listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? Sharon?
Yes.
What's the percentage of our students that basically need financial aid?
I would say good, maybe eighty percent of our students. It's a, it's a large majority of our students that need some kind of financial aid, whether it's grants, but there's also the self-help. So you can, you have to include them all.
So basically, what you're saying is that your activities there touch the lives of about at least eighty percent of our students?
Absolutely. And my goal is to minimize those barriers and be able to bring that counseling back into the college. And that's sorely missed, you know, the students one-on-one with the counselors. And it helps the students tremendously. So it's the goal.
Well, I know that just, Carter, you know, four, five, six years ago, this department was one of the Achilles' heels as far as the number of complaints and problems in the department. And I just want to commend you, Sharon, and Nadine-
Yes.
-for what a dramatic turnaround-
Thank you.
... has taken place in just the last three years. And on behalf of the board, I want to thank you for your efforts.
My, thank you. I, I, just, one thing before I leave, I know I don't want to get on my soapbox, but I really believe that it's, you know, the vision of Dr. Walter in the sense that she has allowed us the freedom to imagine and vision and create a vision, and Dr. Gonzalez has facilitated that. And I think that this skies the world for, as far as my imagination, and what we can do for our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. That was very, very interesting, but important. And what Phil said is correct. There's a hundred percent turnaround in that department. All right, we'll go to committees. Audit and Finance?
Audit and Finance, President. Board approved AF 1 through AF 18.
Board of School Estuement, I guess, pretty soon, maybe having a meeting-
Hopefully, we're waiting on them to give us a date.
Okay. Education and Student Affairs?
We're recommending approval of ESA 1 through 6.
Personnel?
We recommend P1 through P12.
Foundation Grants and Endowment?
Thank you, Carter. The foundation, Lindsay Mauer, our new executive director, has been very, very busy looking at all aspects of the foundation, the organization of the foundation, the makeup of the foundation board. We've done some bylaw revisions that'll probably take effect within the next few months. But most importantly, we're preparing for this year's signature event on March 30th at the Venetian. Our casino night is going to be minted as Club Monte Carlo. We'll be bringing folks back to a time of the 1940s with the feeling of a Casablanca effect to it by presenting an evening at a supper club with gaming. There will be a Fred and Ginger floor show and a lot of high spirits. It's going to be an outstanding event, and it is, just so, this is our major fundraiser of the year. We did not pull the medallion dinner last year, looking to change things up a little bit. So this, this is it. So I behoove all of my colleagues on the board and the college community and everyone to please support this event, not only because it is our major fundraiser, because I'll tell you what, we're going to have a heck of a good time there. It's going to be a great night again, March 30th at the Venetian. Thank you, Carter.
Thank you, Phil. Site and Facilities?
Site and Facilities met and offers SF 1 through SF 5.
Strategic Planning?
Okay. It's February 2nd. This is it. Back in beginning of 2013, I think we talked about the creation of the Steering Committee for the Middle States Evaluation. We are now twenty-two days, or twenty-seven days away from the Steering Committee having dinner with Dr. Ender and the team being on campus with us until through March 2nd to do their evaluation. These presentations that you've been listening to each month on what each department is doing on assessment gives you an idea of what kind of emphasis that Middle States and the Steering Committee team puts on the assessment part of the program. Hundred and two pages long. I'm not asking you to read all the pages because you've been listening. You're listening to Sharon today. You've got a good idea of what they've been doing in that respective area regarding assessment. But read the first four pages and then go to each of the fourteen standards. Go to the back of those standards and look at findings, suggestions, recommendations. It'll give you a good idea. Again, I've been privileged, this is my third Middle States Steering Committee team during my tenure here as a trustee. It's as fine a document as I've, I've ever seen. And I want to commend Dr. Kim and Gail and Sony, and quite frankly, literally, the hundreds of staff and faculty members that have given their time and effort to the creation of this document. I expect it to be extremely well-received, and we really look forward to the team and Dr. Ender visiting us the end of the month. Thank you, Carter.
Thank you, Phil. And it was very interesting to read, it really was. And I hope all the members of the board had an opportunity to, to read it. At this time, our liaison to New Jersey Council?
Chairman, the council didn't meet this past month, but we will be meeting next month, and naturally, we'll keep you advised. There is some concern with regard to federal legislation. As you know, it's the president's final year in office. He's meeting today with the Speaker of the House of Representatives to try to come to some understanding as to what pieces of legislation they'll be able to mutually support. So we'll look forward to hearing within the next several days what that agenda will be and how it will impact our community colleges.
Thank you.
Carter, did you miss Personnel?
Pardon?
Did you miss Personnel? How you presented this?
Alumni trustee, Lauren?
Good evening, Chairman, Dr. Walter, and members of the board, and also the audience. So what I'd like to talk about is, we've been calling it the pay-to-print, but thanks to Larry, let's see here, hi, we want to move away from that, and we want to call it the new printing procedure. Because if students use it wisely, most students will never have to pay to print. So that's really what we want to get across to students. Larry was great. He put up all the flyers, and he's getting out the word to students that they have to be conscientious of how much they print. So we just want to make it clear to students that as long as you use your printing wisely, not only will you be saving trees, helping the college, but you also won't have to pay to print. Thank you.
All right. Well, I would like to make a statement. We've got some pretty good publicity the other day in regard to our drone program. And I would like to congratulate, everyone had a part in that. And again, I say, every time I turned on the television station, Bergen Community College was there. And just for the general public, I'd emphasize that we are one of only three community colleges in the entire country to have this program, and we're the only one certified in the air. Is that right? And I thank everyone. At this time, is there any unfinished business? If not, I will open the meeting to the public. Anyone from the public wish to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Richard Berbridge, and I'm here to share with you a proposal that will have an impact on the students, faculty, and administration, and the community beyond BCC. The name of that proposal is the Trans-Pacific Partnership Agreement, or TPP, or the trade deal. Is there anyone here familiar with its details?
I'm not.
The trade deal is an economic integration proposal that has been agreed upon by twelve Pacific nations, including the United States, Vietnam, Peru, and Malaysia. Next Monday or Tuesday, activists expect Congress to vote on the TPP. The nonprofit organizations OpenMedia.org, Creative Commons, and the Electronic Frontier Foundation, the EFF, oppose the TPP. The EFF has stated the following. TPP reflects the worst aspects of the U.S. Digital Millennium Copyright Act, DMCA. The EFF states the following as some of the consequences of the TPP. Use of textbooks, documents, movies, photographs, or other copyrighted works for school assignments and projects could be restricted even further because such rights are not enshrined in the TPP. Heavy-handed criminal and civil penalties for copyright infringement can be chilling on students who seek to share or use copyrighted works for educational purposes, or at worst, it could lead to imprisonment or leave them with huge fines. Excessive copyright terms harm the availability of books, photographs, and all creative works in the public domain. Fans putting on a theme play or cosplay based on a character from a movie or a favorite television show could be forced to pay a penalty or have images from it removed from the internet if it happens to go viral. And, well, if it happens to go viral, they may be held criminally liable because arguably at a commercial scale. Removing DRM, Digital Rights Management, or rights management information from textbooks, articles, or any kind of creative work could lead to criminal liabilities if they share the unlocked work with friends or fellow students. Despite explicit exceptions for libraries and museums, a ban on tools circumventing DRM limits their ability to take advantage of it because they often lack the knowledge or resources to do so. This leads to the following questions. Does BCC have the ability or the resources to circumvent DRM? If a student downloads multimedia via BCC's Wi-Fi, will BCC punish the student? Does BCC want to be in the position of an educator and an enforcer? If a faculty member uses a library computer to download a picture from a website and saves it to an anonymous email account, will BCC be held legally accountable? And will BCC require every user of a computer in its libraries to identify her or himself? On the yellow handouts that I'm going to pass out, I have further details about the TPP's further impact on digital rights. The TPP is similar to the North American Free Trade Agreement, or NAFTA, and the World Trade Organization, which both went into effect in the mid-1990s. The Economic Policy Institute stated that jobs that were created by NAFTA, on average, paid less than the jobs that were destroyed by NAFTA. In fact, they estimate that one million more jobs were estimated, were eliminated than were created by NAFTA. According to Public Citizen, five million American manufacturing jobs were lost from 1994 through 2013 as a result of both NAFTA and the World Trade Organization. The Communication Workers of America opposes the TPP because they fear the offshoring of their white-collar jobs to Vietnam, where workers earn thirty-one percent less than workers in China. A fair question to ask is, what mechanism has been added to the TPP to prevent history from repeating itself? Also, American call centers, computer programming, engineering, accounting, and medical diagnosis jobs threatened by the TPP. Will a smaller American workforce earning less money be able to afford community colleges? Will a smaller economy reduce government revenues at the federal, state, and local levels and thus government support of BCC? Yes. Does anyone here love shrimp? Guess not. About ninety-four percent of America's shrimp is imported. I have a blue handout that includes a section of last year's article by Consumer Reports about the inadequacies of the FDA shrimp inspection system. Here's the article. Here's the issue. Consumer Reports found problems of antibiotic drug residues, salmonella, and other bacteria flag challenged concerns about the use of pesticides that are illegal here in the United States for shrimp farming. The blue handout also includes an article about how the TPP would allow foreign companies to lower American seafood safety standards to the levels of other TPP countries. I believe that the average American will experience at least four negative consequences because of the TPP. A politician's membership as a Democrat or a Republican has been a poor predictor of their support or opposition to the TPP. Former House Speaker John Boehner and President Barack Obama have been pushing the TPP. In fact, after three attempts this past July, they were successful in passing Fast Track Trade Promotion Authority. Fast Track shifted power from Congress to the current president and Obama's successor with regard to these economic agreements. These presidents can now block Congress from revising these economic integration proposals, including the TPP. Congress can only vote yes or no. Let's stop the TPP. How? Tomorrow, call the offices of your representative and Senators Menendez and Booker if you reside in New Jersey, and tell them to vote against the Trans-Pacific Partnership Agreement. The contact information is on the back of the handouts that I have. Representative Scott Garrett is on, was on the fence last December. Your call can push him in the correct direction. Stop the TPP. Even if an individual is unsure about the specifics of the TPP, she or he can tell Congress tomorrow morning, stop the TPP if it will cause any of the following. Underegulations of the American financial markets, roll back food labeling, destroy family farms, expand fracking, raise generic drug prices twenty to fifty times, criminalize individuals who download texts or photos for personal or educational purposes, offshore jobs, lower food safety standards, eliminate country-of-origin labeling like NAFTA did recently with meat and poultry from Canada, or expose the government to lawsuits in tribunal, similar to NAFTA tribunal, where TransCanada is suing the United States fifteen billion dollars for rejecting the Keystone XL pipeline, a pipeline which would have cost three billion. But why are they suing fifteen when it costs free? They are suing for expected future profits. These tribunals are outside the jurisdiction of the Supreme Court. They have allowed corporations to sue and collect compensation for expected loss of future profits. Stop the TPP. Stop the TPP tomorrow. Has anyone heard of Doctors Abel orders? Yes. They state that a decade ago, the price of first-generation age drugs was approximately ten thousand dollars per year per patient. Now with the expiration of those patents, these drugs are now less than two hundred dollars a generics. They say that the TPP will grant twenty-year, new twenty-year monopoly rights for prescription drugs whose patents have already expired, and extend existing patents for new prescription drugs. I have family members who take generic, who take prescription medication for long-term illnesses, medical conditions, and some of them are generics. I do not want them to pay increases in drug prices of twenty times, which has happened in Peru, or fifty times, which has been implied by Public Citizen and Doctors Abel orders. Stop the TPP. Thank you for your time. I will be available for questions at the end of the meeting. Does the board have any questions?
No, but that's an awful lot for us to consume in five minutes.
Yes.
I think we all would have to look a lot more at it. I mean, it sounds like this is the right thing to do, but I just speak for myself, I couldn't possibly make a decision based just on what you've said.
I agree. And since, and it's different from when I was growing up now, the internet is very easy to confirm the information very quickly. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Brad Chapman, speaking in my role as Vice President of the Faculty Association. Prior to your approval of the AF items, there's an incorrect item in one of the billings from Dacotis. The second page of the Kelly grievance has items that were cut and pasted from another item. I know that because I handled that grievance. There was no subpoena, and there's no state versus Rockman in that case, so those are incorrectly placed. The other items, they are redacted, so I don't know if they're correct or not, but it should be looked at. That's item one. Item two, since I've brought up the Kelly case, I would like to actually say something very personal. We submitted a stage-three grievance on October 8th. The decision on that was delayed for two and a half months. Fine. However, whoever approved the idea of sending someone who is trying desperately to get their job back on official rejection on behalf of this room by FedEx on December 23rd, guess what? It shows up on December 24th. That was the most disgusting thing I had ever seen, and the person responsible for it should be used as a Good Friday decoration with some two-by-fours and nails.
Would anyone else like to be heard? If not, I will move to close the public portion. All in favor? Let's get on then to the consent agenda. First of all, the approval of the minutes for December 1st and January 7th.
I'm moving, Carter.
Is your second? All in favor? All right, the consent agenda. Audit and Finance, AF 1 through 18. Education and Student Affairs, ESA 1 through 6, and Institutional 1. And that's it. Is there a motion on the consent? Oh, I'm sorry.
Keep going, Carter.
I'm looking at what you gave me. Oh, wait, one more page. Okay, I'm sorry. I was slipped the-
Changes.
Put it in the wrong page. Personnel, P1 through 11, and Site and Facilities, 1 through 5.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Personnel, P1 through 11, twelve.
Okay. Let me get this straight, because I was getting this on the page. Personnel, 1, and you say through 12?
Twelve.
All right, that's an added. And how about Site and Facilities, 1 through 6?
Five.
Five, I'm sorry. And as I said before, Institutional, I. All right, I hope we have it straight. Everybody else seems to have a straight pointy. Okay, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I'm moving.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Passed. Any, I will reopen to the public if they wish to come. Anyone from the public wish to be heard? If not, I will take a motion to adjourn. All in favor?